I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation Pastor Dan Scruggs from North Chapel Church.
Thank you. Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for these people that are here to serve. We thank you for the mayor and the city council and the committee members and the staff, Father, that assemble here in service to this community. Father, we pray that you would give them great wisdom, Father, that they would know exactly what to do and when to do it and how to do it. Father, we would pray that you would give them discernment so that when they have issues, Father, that are presented to them, they know exactly the core, they know exactly where to go and what to do. Father, we thank you for this staff, and I ask for you to issue a blessing for this staff for the hard work and the diligence that they do and they perform. Father, we know that there are two types of people that are assembled here, those who serve and those who are being served. And, Father, we would be ever mindful that you would remind us which we are when we come. Father, thank you for this time that you've given us, thank you for these people that are here, and thank you for the things that you're going to do in this community. May you shine your light on this community. We ask all this in the powerful name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Dan. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Leger?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Start up with my mayor's report since our last meeting. It was a great honor to present Roy Kinsey with a plaque from the town at the dedication and opening of our Preserve Trail, named after Mr. Kinsey and Mr. Andrews, his counterpart in Scottsdale. Roy has worked tirelessly over many years to secure this beautiful preserve for us and future generations to enjoy. We are so grateful for Roy's vision and perseverance, and we all hope that soon we will be able to build our trailhead and have real access to the Preserve. I attended an event featuring Hugh Hewitt and legislative leaders which dealt with issues related to the upcoming session. As a new member of the League Executive Committee, it gave me good insight of how few of the important issues will be handled down at the legislature. Ken and I had a good meeting with representatives from Epcor. Present were the new vice president, community relations representative, and the operations supervisor. We again laid out all the issues that many residents are having concerning excessive volume use and overcharges. They promised to look into each complaint. We'll make sure they do. It was an honor to be the keynote speaker at the Veterans Day Ceremony. My talk was on the history of women in the military, from the Revolutionary War to the present. It was great to see such a huge crowd attending that event. I also attended two ribbon cuttings. We had 360 physical therapy and McDowell Mountain Cycle. And I also attended the dedication of the Learning Center, which was dedicated to honor Joanne Man, past superintendent of our schools. I want to thank Nick DePorter for his invitation to visit De Colores, a domestic violence shelter in Phoenix. They're doing great work, helping women and families to not only keep them safe, but give them training so that they can live independent lives. I attended a reception with my husband, an opening of exhibit at the Musical Instrument Museum, and of course, I used that opportunity to network with others, but also the attending legislators. As a member of the school coalition, keeping our kids off alcohols and drugs, I attended a very informative session with Dr. Stephen Dewey, a leading authority on brain science and substance abuse. Many in the community also attended. I also attended my first League of Arizona Cities and Towns Executive Committee meeting. It was very interesting and informative. I'm very anxious to get started with the new legislative session. The Chamber Fair was here this weekend. It looked like a big success. There were very large crowds, the weather was perfect, and everything seemed to be running smoothly. And lastly, I spent a lot of time this weekend speaking to, meeting with, and exchanging emails with people of faith, religious leaders, religious freedom advocates, and other citizens who were justifiably upset about the council placing on the agenda for action an anti-discrimination ordinance or a policy covering gays, lesbians, bisexuals, and transgendered people. I personally coordinated with about a dozen of our religious leaders, ordinary citizens, and representatives from the Center for Arizona Policy and the Alliance Defending Freedom, an organization dedicated to defending religious freedom. I should, I want to add thanks to everyone's quick action. That item is not on tonight's agenda. They apparently convinced enough of the other council members who placed the item on the agenda to remove it.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Is this an agenda item?
This is part of my report.
Well, I mean, economic development.
Exactly. And just to set the record straight, for those who called me...
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't understand why we're talking about this.
This is my report, and in my report, I am putting my actions of the last weekend, and these were my actions of the last weekend.
Mayor, remember, relating to economic development is what's agendized, so we need to make sure we stick to that agenda item.
It's also a combination of my activities and economic development. I guess nobody wants to hear what I did because no one wants me to say what happened. Everybody knows what happened at the last meeting. There's no reason that I can't reiterate it in my report. And I just feel that I... Excuse me, you're out of order. I am doing my report.
I'd like an opinion from...
And just to set the record straight for all those who called me after the Times article, Councilman Yates and I were the two who voted against this. All right, now I will go on to recognition of retiring Strategic Planning Advisory Commissioners, Audra Kestner-Thomas, Nick DePorter, and Alan Magazine for their service to the town. And I see Nick is here and Alan is here. Is Audra here? Let's see, Audra. Let me read something about you first, okay? Audra Kestner-Thomas served on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission from May 2, 2008 to November 5, 2014. She was chair of the commission for over three years, from March of 2009 until July of 2012, during which time she led the update to the strategic plan that was adopted by the town council on May 20, 2010. Strategic Plan 2010 was built on the contributions of citizens and stakeholders and involved over eighty total meetings, feedback from over two thousand residents. I'm just talking about you, Audra. I'm telling them all about you. I'm glad you made it. Approximately fifteen hundred volunteer hours, and the project came in ninety-seven percent under budget. Audra's expertise in strategic planning was relied upon heavily by the two subsequent SPAC chairs. Nick DePorter served on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission from July 1, 2011 to September 11, 2014, when he resigned after his election to the town council. He was chair from July of 2012 to August 2013. During his chairmanship, Strategic Plan 2010 was revived, was revised to include three new strategic directions, and at the request of councils, SPAC also developed recommendations on short-term priorities for targeted industry sectors for the town's economic development plan. Alan Magazine served on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission from March 5, 2009 to September 16, 2014. He served as chair from August of 2013 to September of 2014, when he resigned after being elected to the town council. During his term as chair, SPAC continued to focus on implementation, strategies for the town's economic development plan, and the commission prioritized the short-term objectives of the economic development matrix. And now if you'll come up, we have flags for you. Let's see, Bob is ready with his... Congratulations, guys, on both fronts. Congratulations. Recognition of retiring Planning and Zoning Commissioners Eugene Schlechter, Angela Strohman, and Stephen Harris for their service to the town. I see Angela's here, and I don't see Jean. Okay. Angela Strohman served on the Planning and Zoning Commission from October 1, 2010 to September 30, 2014. Ms. Strohman was appointed by the commissioners to serve as vice chairman from February 2013 until February 2014. Ms. Strohman was a very valuable member of a Planning and Zoning Commission and served with pride for the residents of our community. Eugene Schlechter served as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner from November 3, 2011 until September 30, 2014. Mr. Schlechter was a very active commissioner and contributed time and dedication to various issues brought before the commission that required skillful decision-making. Stephen Harris served as a Planning and Zoning Commission from October 1, 2012 until October 30, 2014, when he decided to move closer to family out of state. Mr. Harris served the community, and we appreciate all that he has contributed. Okay, Angela, will come up? We always do a really lengthy recognition like that, talking about what they've done on the commission, because they do put in a lot of volunteer hours all year. Some of them have been on those commissions for a very long time, so we do appreciate their voluntary service to the town. And now we have call to the public. Do you have your speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have two cards. Neville Verster, followed by Justin Erickson.
Okay. Come right up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Neville Verster. I've been a resident of Fountain Hills and still am for the last twenty-five years, I believe it is. I want to commend you, Mayor. I want to commend you, Vice Mayor Yates, on the strength, the courage that you took to stand for the community. It was a noble thing that you did. We, as the community, appreciate what you did. In fact, I want to also thank you, Mayor, for demonstrating the courage to speak your agenda this week, which we, as a public, actually did want to hear. I thank you for completing that. I'm here to speak about the anti-discrimination, or as I would much have preferred to see it, because that's another one of those things that's been co-opted by the left. This is not anti-discrimination, it is actually freedom from coercion. That's how I would have preferred to see this named, because this is a coercive attempt. It's not an unknown thing. We're seeing this throughout the country. I think that everyone over here, sitting at this podium, or rather, at this platform, sees and knows what's happening in the community, not just in Arizona, but in the rest of the country, and in fact, indeed, in the world. The benign language that we see, that was listed in there, in the ordinance, is not benign in the slightest. It is actually language that has significant results for the Christian community particularly. There are plethora of lawsuits that are destroying good mom-and-pop businesses as a result of these insidious laws, these ordinances. In a letter that I wrote to the Times, I listed many of these particular cases. I want to strongly urge the council that when you do your research, here is a manuscript that is put out by Alliance Defending Freedom called Sexual Orientation, Gender Identity Issues. They list numerous cases of good businessmen and women, Christians, who have been completely put out of business, significant lawsuits affecting them, and why. What is, what is the common reason? Common reason is that they believe in God, and that their relationship with God trumps the relationship with the state. As a matter of fact, it's kind of interesting, because one of Mr. Obama's appointments, indeed, this is Chai Feldman, I'll read, "There can be a conflict between religious liberty and sexual liberty, but in almost all cases, sexual liberty should win." Ladies and gentlemen, we, our country was founded on religious freedom from people that escaped the tyranny of government dictatorship with regard to religious freedom. We cannot forget that. There are many of us like immigrants that came to this country particularly for that. On the other hand, let me read you something else, a voice of rationality. "A time is coming when government will demand that churches accept and promote an understanding of sexuality and gender that directly opposes God's word. We, as believers, cannot subordinate and subjugate our religious conscience, our freedom, our liberties before God, to sacrifice at the altar of the homosexual community. I urge you to study this manual for yourselves, anybody else that might happen to see this, Christian pastors. This is a significant document that will protect you when the time does come, because that little knock, knock, knock on the door is not Little Red Riding Hood, it is a homosexual couple that is about to destroy your life. We don't have any hate towards homosexuals, quite the contrary. We love people, we recognize we are all sinners under God, and so it is our desire for people to treat each other decently. I don't know of any Christian businesses that will try to destroy homosexuals, but I see many, many efforts to destroy Christians in their capacity. I ask you to please study the numerous cases that is in this manual from Alliance Defending Freedom, and I thank you so much for your attention. God bless."
Thank you.
Justin Erickson?
Madam Mayor and distinguished members of the council, my name is Justin Erickson. I'm a local church pastor here in Fountain Hills and also a resident, a father of five children, and we very much appreciate and want to appear to you tonight to say thank you to you for the significant role, which is oftentimes difficult, that you play in providing a town with your leadership that is both safe and enjoyable. And the Bible actually says to us, as Christians, to honor you and to submit to you and to pray for you, which we do with great frequency and with great joy. And we want to very joyfully come underneath the authority that God has actually given to you. In fact, as a minister, I don't know if you know this or not, but the Bible calls you ministers too. You can feel free to use that at appropriate times, but this is what, this is what it says, in fact, in scripture. It says in Romans 13, "Every person is to be in subjection to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and those which exist are established by God. Therefore, whoever resists the authority has opposed the ordinance of God, and they who have opposed will receive condemnation upon themselves. For rulers are not a cause of fear for good behavior, but for evil. Do you want to have no fear of authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise from the same. For it is a minister of God to you for good. But if you do what is evil, be afraid; for it does not bear the sword for nothing; for it is a minister of God, an avenger who brings wrath on the one who practices evil. Therefore, it is necessary to be in subjection, not only for wrath, but also for conscience' sake. For because of this you also pay taxes; for rulers are servants of God, devoting themselves to this very thing. So Paul says, 'Render to all what is due them, tax to whom it is due, custom to whom it is due, fear to whom fear, and honor to whom honor.'" And what I guess I want to say to you is that the Bible calls us here in this place to honor and fear and submit to you, because you are in a position of ministry established by God in this town, and it says, "For our good," and "For the purpose of restraining evil." And that's my role too, and while our roles as ministers might differ quite significantly, you restrain evil and promote what is good, you use legislation and law enforcement, and we use the Bible. And in a day when our cultural values are being very quickly redefined, and in a day when depravity is catching up with democracy, I stand, as does my church, Harvest Bible Chapel, ready to proclaim and defend those things where God has clarity and authority, and to also support you and to come alongside you in your efforts to do what is right. Now, as a pastor, you're not just going to see me when there's controversy. The Bible also tells me to seek the welfare of the city. The city where I live, God wants me to invest and pour myself out for good, so in that we have a very common cause. But in those cases where the Bible speaks with clarity and authority in matters of controversy, you know where I'll be, in my place, with the word of God speaking clearly. Whenever it is, I have a privilege of coming before this council and an invocation. I always close my prayer with, "Lord, whatever it is that you approve, may it be what they approve." And that'll continue to be my prayer for you and my encouragement and my support. God bless you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to respond to criticism in this call to the public session if there's no more speaker cards.
No more cards.
No more cards?
I think it's important, this matter relating to, and I want to respond to the mayor's comments, this matter relating to what two wonderful speakers just came up and spoke on. Anyone that didn't see the last council meeting, I would encourage you to go watch the entire meeting and not listen necessarily to what your neighbor, your friends, everyone is telling you. Watch the entire meeting yourself, listen to what this council said and those council members that voted to discuss the issue. If you listen to everything that was said by myself and my fellow council members, you'll see that there was no desire whatsoever to have a town ordinance on this issue. Each council member that spoke, that voted in favor of a discussion on this issue, questioned whether or not that was something that could, could be financially, well, frankly, whether it's right for the town. And if you listen to everything that everyone said, there was no desire or intention whatsoever to have a town ordinance. Unfortunately, this has been very overblown. It's been co-opted, so for political purposes, I believe, and frankly, there never, in my mind, ever was going to be an ordinance in this town as was sought or as was agendized. Recall that there was to be a discussion about an ordinance, a unity pledge, something to say that the town of Fountain Hills is open to everyone, regardless of your race, your gender, your religious beliefs, your sexual orientation. That's all that it was. It was nothing more than that. And I certainly appreciate everybody's interest in this, but I will not sit here and allow it to be misconstrued as to what we discussed. You have five elected council members that voted in favor of discussing it. That was it. And if you watch the entire meeting, you will see that there was no intention or desire. I spoke out, Councilmember Brown spoke out, Councilmember Leger, Councilmember Hanson, who all said ordinance is probably, isn't good for the town, it's something that should be done at a different level. So I just want to be very clear about that and respond to the mayor's criticism that she and Vice Mayor Yates were the only ones that voted against it. There was no vote to do anything other than discuss. That was it. Nothing more. Thank you.
Beg to differ. There was a vote to pass it along or not to do anything at all, and Councilman Yates and I voted not to pass it along, because we didn't think that anything was good for this town. And so we did vote. The vote was five to two. You know, you voted. You vote however you want to vote, and then you stand behind your vote. I don't mind being the only vote, or the only vote of two, that I stand behind my vote, and that's it.
Well, anybody can go back and look at the minutes, Mayor. And you can't misconstrue what people are saying for your own purpose.
Well, I know that a lot of the people that are in this audience did watch the entire video, and they also read the newspaper, they read the article from the Times, and then I started to get the phone calls and the emails, and that's how this all happened. So, so everybody misinterpreted it?
We're way off.
All right. Should I go on to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor?
All right, I am going on to the consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as...
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor. I'd like to remove something from the consent agenda, if I could.
Okay. Which one?
I'd like to remove the minutes from the consent agenda, please.
You want to remove the minutes?
Yes.
All right. All right. Let me have a roll call vote on who wants to remove the minutes from the consent agenda. You want? Okay. All right. Let's vote on the other three, then. I have three items, two, three, and four on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve them as listed?
So moved.
Okay. Well, and a roll call on that.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
And Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay, then I guess the minutes become agenda item number one, consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from November 6, 2014.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to look at the minutes so that, before we approve them, that we are aware of what is in them, which, of course, we do get a look at beforehand, so we have a chance. And I think the minutes are fine. I just wanted to reiterate what was said, including by me at the meeting. It wasn't just you folks, because once you all spoke up, that was, that was good knowledge. And so part of my actual remarks that I put together before I came said that "Any action this would be determined with ample opportunities for input and review by the public and the council in order to customize it to Fountain Hills, including any budgetary issues." Then Councilman Leger said, among other things, "This gives us all the latitude to actually drill down and research the policies that are out there, 150 other cities and such. Look at the possibility and the probability of implementing one." He invited each and every one of the members of the audience to do that as well. He noted this is a very complex issue. And last, right at the end, I said I appreciated what Councilman Leger was doing, keeping it open, because we don't know what will be presented, but it provides an opportunity to get information and try to make it acceptable or not, and an opportunity to look at it in a thorough way. It opens it up, but it doesn't force us into doing anything, because we don't really even know what it will look like yet. So the other part of that, of these minutes, indicate that there was no intention to bring this back as an ordinance or to bring it back anytime soon. And also included in the minutes is the fact that there were many people here and a petition and all of those kind of things. So if you want to weigh back and forth, there's plenty of constituent influence and input that is, that we, that we look at. But these minutes show that there was no intention to bring this back, and in fact, we spoke several times about how much more information we would need before we would dis- discuss it. And I go along with what Tate said, that there was no indication that we would ever bring an ordinance back, and the motion never had the word ordinance in it. So before we approve our minutes, I wanted to bring up to you what was actually in the minutes.
Okay. And just to your point about that you didn't want it to come back, I'm completely puzzled by that, because I have an email from you.
Mayor, let's stick with the minutes item. We're already astray quite a bit here.
Well, if Councilwoman Dickey is going to say that this entirely misinterpreted...
But, Mayor, it's not an agenda for discussion on. It's just a recitation of the minutes.
Well, okay.
I don't want us to get into open meeting violation territory.
Make a motion to accept minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay. Let's see. Next is consideration of accepting two donated sculptures titled Father Sky and Mother Earth for placement in the community center.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, Community Services Director has a report regarding a recommendation from the Public Art Committee for two art pieces.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you have before you this evening two additional pieces of art potentially to be placed in the community center. These two pieces, which are titled Mother Earth and Father Sky, are of alabaster, and they were created by Navajo artist Alvin Marshall. They're being donated by a local resident, Virginia Matic, and the Public Art Committee is recommending acceptance and placement on public display in the lobby of the community center. The two pieces have a value of $14,500, and staff is recommending acceptance of the piece and their placement as recommended. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
These are going to, are they going to go on pedestals in the community center, or are they...
Yes, they are what I would consider to be half-sized, and so as you can see from this display, the donor actually had them on pedestals, and the Public Art Committee plans on acquiring pedestals to place them on.
And where exactly are they going to go?
If you look at the site map, it will show the actual location. Let me see if I can get us there. Directly underneath the site on the map there is the Centennial Circle. So this is actually in the lobby area. The main doors are directly to the left. It shows one particular piece of art there now, but that is a wall hanging, and so there is ample space there for these two pieces.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for...
Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Legay?
Mark, in that we're discussing art and in that we have a group of citizens here this evening, I think it's important for people to hear this message over and over. I continue to hear people, I receive emails, bump into people in Safeway, that continuously are critical of the fact that the town is wasting their money on all this artwork that's throughout Fountain Hills, that there are significant needs, other needs, and why are we spending money on art when there are roads to repair, ballparks to turf, so forth and so on? So given that we have a nice crowd here this evening and we're on television, could you just very briefly kind of go over how this all operates, what the town's role is, and who's paying for the tremendous art that is housed throughout Fountain Hills? Thank you.
Certainly. Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Legay. Basically, the town has two major ways to acquire art pieces. By vast majority, the number of pieces that we get are donated outright by people, such as this. In the case of a donation of an item, we receive the item and place it. We have typically not incurred any other costs, other than we clean the sculptures on a monthly basis. There's obviously a little bit of soap and water and volunteers involved in doing that, but we're talking about pennies on the dollar. We also insure the pieces. As you can see here, the annual cost to insure this piece against vandalism or any kind of damage is $62.35. Again, balanced in that with acquiring a piece that's worth $14,500, which will continue to escalate in value, again, is pennies on the dollar. The only other way that we typically acquire a piece is through the 1%, which is paid by, as you know, developers, and that money is set aside in a fund so that if we do see a piece that can be acquired by that means, it is purchased. But again, it's not dollars that were coming from taxpayers specifically for support of town services. It is money that's raised specifically for public art.
Thank you, Mark, for that clarification. I appreciate it. Mayor, with that being said, I move to accept the donated sculpture, Father Sky and Mother Earth, for placement in the community center.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Just want to thank Virginia. I know her very well, and we're very grateful for her donation to the town.
We will pass that along.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Number six is consideration of accepting the invitation for bids DS 2015-102 with Nesbit Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of $6,770,217.53 for the construction of the Suaro Boulevard Reconstruction Project, right down to the penny. And Paul?
Mayor Kavanaugh, council members, this is the construction contract for the Suaro Boulevard project. Once the design plans were finished, we publicly bid the project per the Arizona State statute requirements. On October 22nd, we received 11 bids. The bids ranged from the $6,770,000 from Nesbit all the way up to approximately $8.5 million. The Nesbit bid for the project includes approximately $6,421,000 for Suaro. That is the amount of construction associated with the bond. There was also a portion of the project for the traffic signal replacement at Palisades. That part of the project is approximately $350,000, and that will be paid through our capital improvement fund. With approval of the contract tonight, we were anticipating a notice to proceed in early January. However, we've had a pretty long drawn-out process with SRP and prior rights to get all their underground facilities relocated in the Suaro intersection. We got all that ironed out. Will we bring in a contract back to council to pay for the relocation of the SRP facilities at the December 18th meeting? So we're anticipating most likely now a late January, early February start date so we can have SRP get in there. Because one of the first things the contractor wants to do is get into that intersection, because that's where the majority of the work is, where all the underground work is, and we need to get SRP relocated.
Okay. So originally, we were like beginning of January?
Correct.
And so we're just, we're cutting like a month maybe?
Correct.
Or a little less?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paul? Questions?
Mayor, if I may. Paul, we bonded for, and the citizens approved $8.2 million. Not to put you on the spot, what is this going to cost us at the end of the... This is a... This bid came in...
Correct. It's a finance question, Bob. Ken, correct me if I'm wrong. We've got roughly the $6.4, $6.5 million in construction. You're going to have close to another $900,000 in design and construction management. We're going to have $150,000 to $200,000 in SRP relocations. There's some costs we incurred already with the attorneys reviewing plans, acquiring some easements. There's approximately, I believe, about a $100,000 cost to actually issue the bonds. So I believe the amount you'll see coming forward is in the, is it like $7.6 million?
Which is, which is less than we requested when we went up for the bond. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And Councilwoman Hanson?
Paul, when the design, or when you were looking at that intersection of the avenue and Suaro, was any consideration given to any type of lighting at all?
No, that wasn't in the scope, and I believe when we brought it before council, before, it was really just fix the road. We didn't do any new sidewalks, fill any sidewalk gaps, no lighting, no new crosswalks. It's really just fixing the road and drainage.
I think one of the things that, you know, comes to mind every time we have an event, and people crossing at that intersection between the park and the west side of Suaro. And now with the lights on on the median, oh, I'm sorry, the plaza, you know, the way that illuminates the area, it was just, you know, would it be possible at all to add just a couple of those same lights? You know, I know like on the design on Suaro, you're extending the median into the intersection, you know, possibly if there was a light on each one of those extensions, or, you know, strategically placed that might illuminate. I have no idea what the cost would be, but if that was just...
You wouldn't, I don't know what cost off the top of my head, but you incurred design costs, SRP costs, cost of the poles. The original Suaro proposal had those lights through the downtown area on Suaro, and it was taken out of the scope by council.
Why would we do that? I think it's more, it became more visual when the lights were turned on the plaza, and it was like, oh, you know, you can really see people walking now. And it's just, it's a problem at Suaro.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates? Vice Mayor Yates?
To Councilmember Hanson's point, though, since we are roughly $500,000 below, we don't want to change the scope, but as an add-on, is it possible to even...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Yates, the bond issue will be coming back to you at your first meeting in December, and that amount is fixed.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
What about that fountain on the end? That's going to be lit up, isn't it, the new fountain?
It will be similar, it will be similar to the fountain on the east, west side of Verde River, but it will be a, instead of one drop, it'll be a multiple drop. I believe there's three pools.
Okay. But so that's not really going to generate any kind of light that would spill out for the intersection?
No, you'll have the, you'll have the site walls and the gabion columns with the small lights on top, but that'll be set back from the intersection.
Probably not. Okay. Councilman Elke?
Paul, is there anyone here from Nesbit?
I don't believe so. No. Didn't see anybody.
$6.7 million.
You just showed up to say hi.
Yeah. I might show up for that. Paul, what can you tell us about Nesbit? Has the town used them before, or do you have any knowledge about their work in other towns?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Elke, yes. The Nesbit did our Millan overlay on Shea on the west end last year, and they did some asphalt replacement in our zone six and seven, and they're currently working out on Shea. And that's really why we got a very, very good price from Nesbit, is because they'll have cheaper mobilization costs, and they'll roll crews right into the Suaro project.
Have you found them to be responsive to questions and other issues that come up?
So far, they've been very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor, if I may, just on a positive note, being somewhat optimistic and responsive to Councilwoman Hanson's interest, we will have, now that the Plaza Avenue, the Fountain Plaza has been completed, a balance in that downtown development fund, as we know, is dedicated specifically for downtown improvement. So when we budget 15, 16, perhaps that's a project we can look at, similar to, as you may recall, we pulled out the downtown sidewalks out of that fund as well. So just food for thought, so you can move that forward if you'd like.
Lights and sidewalks. Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay.
Have a motion, Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Motion to approve invitation for bids DS 2015-102 with Nesbit Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of $6,770,217.53 for the construction of the Suaro Boulevard Reconstruction Project.
Second.
All right. Were there any speaker cards on the side?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Any other council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. And discussion with possible direction to staff regarding project approvals for the Salt River Project Municipal Aesthetics Fund. Randy?
Mayor, council, staff is seeking council's input and direction regarding project approvals for the Salt River Project Municipal Aesthetics Fund. First, I'd like to give you some background on the Salt River Project electrical system within the town. And I better use the pointer rather than the slide changer. The SRP system, SRP gets their power mainly from dams on the Salt River and Verde River, and transport that through overhead electrical lines coming into town. We have 69 KV lines coming up from the south, the south end of town, and we have 69 KV lines coming in along Shea Boulevard into the Crestview area. This map, you can see the overhead electric power poles ringing the town, looping the town. We have four existing SRP substations which step down the power from that 69 kilovolts down to 12 kilovolts. Those substations are located at the south end of town, the McMullen subdivision, McMullen Substation, on Palisades Boulevard, the Wheeler Substation, up just east of Fountain Hills Boulevard, the Glenbrook Substation, and south of Fountain Park, the Fountain Substation. There'll be a fifth substation sometime in the distant future in the Sunridge Canyon area, and I don't know what they're going to name that, or when it's going to go in. After the substations, SRP steps the voltage down to 12 kilovolts, and almost all of those lines are underground within the town. And from there to transformers and to individual house services. Nearly all of the, as I said, nearly all of the 12 KV lines are underground with two exceptions. One exception is where the 12 KV lines underhang the 69 KV lines on the same poles, and the other exception is at the far north end of town, which I'll mention later on. The next slide shows SRP's typical wiring. At the top of the wiring, they have a static line, and then below that, they have three lines for every 69 KV circuit. Typically, it's one circuit or two circuits, so either three lines or six lines. Below that, they'll have three lines typically for the 12 KV, and again, there could be one or two circuits of three-line 12 KV. And then below that, you will have sometimes a cable TV or a telephone line below that. Back last summer, we, well, let me talk about SRP's Municipal Aesthetics Fund. Annually, SRP sets aside money in a municipal aesthetics fund, and then they allocate it to the various municipalities. Since 1994, the town's done 23 municipal aesthetics projects worth, I think, of about $1.7 million. We currently have an account balance totaling about another $1.7 million. 2012, SRP published a new booklet at the end of 2012, new guidelines. One of those guidelines is, is that each municipality has to reduce their account balance so that you don't have more than three times your annual allocation. For us, we're now getting $100,000 a year, so we have to be down to $300,000 by next May in our account. Otherwise, anything over that is forfeited. We don't really want that to happen. The SRP guidelines basically, although they allocate the money to the town, it can only be used on things that they say it can be used for, which is basically beautifying their system. So they have a specific book that's in your packet that tells what we can do and what we can't do with it. we can't do with it. We, we sent SRP a letter and requested estimates for six different projects last summer. The first one is on the overhead right now is Adaro Canyon. As you know, in our development agreement with MCO for the Adaro Canyon project, we agreed to allocate up to five hundred thousand dollars for relocation of the SRP sixty-nine KV, and this shows where the, the line goes now and where it will be relocated to. So, it's relocated around this parcel one subdivision i, in Adaro Canyon. That project has been authorized by staff and is currently under design by SRP and MCO properties. And I might note that I'm presenting these projects in staff's priority order for these, in our, in our recommended priority order. So, that would be our first priority. Obviously, that's already been authorized. Our second priority is the SRP Smart Router System to do faux Suaro's. And you'll be getting a presentation as well, the planning commission from SRP in the near future regarding their smart router system. Basically, what this will do is this will allow SRP to, for every home to communicate with SRP, and so they'll have real-time information as to your power usage, and you can actually get on and see how much you're using and when, and all that thing. SRP standard would be to just put a steel pole up with the smart router on top of it. Staff requested a, a estimate for upgrading that to faux Suaro's, and, and this is what, what they're proposing, basically a Suaro spear about twenty feet high, and they're in the locations that SRP needs. The, the smart router would then be located up in the top of that, and you won't even be able to see it, basically. The next priority is a swap with Scottsdale. We have a federal aid project to construct a sidewalk on the north side of, excuse me, on the south side of Shea Boulevard from one hundred and forty-second Street to Eagle Mountain Parkway. The federal aid funding is actually not even close to covering the amount of money we need for the project. Scottsdale will be the lead agency on this, and the proposal is to transfer money from our aesthetics fund to a, a, well, not transfer, but to use money from our aesthetics fund to a project in Scottsdale, and then Scott, the city of Scottsdale would then fund construction of this sidewalk in, in the towns right away. We're currently negotiating at the staff level with, with Scottsdale regarding what this project would look like, and how much the cost should be, and all that type of thing. So, we're not sure where, how that's going to end up, or when that's going to end up, and that type of thing. But assuming we can reach a satisfactory conclusion, it would be our next priority. Our, our fourth priority would be to underground the twelve KV lines. Remember, the twelve KV lines are the underhung lines where the SRP sixty-nine KV line crosses Shea, just east of the Taco Bell. Taco Bell is right over in that area, at the, at the east-town boundary. So, the top photo is, looks, what it looks like today. The bottom photo is where, what it would look like after the project. We'd also require that whoever's underhung there would have to underground their line too, probably in joint trench with SRP's twelve KV rerouting. Other projects we had SRP look at, but we, we would consider as alternates in case one of these drops out. There are two. The, the first one is undergrounding the twelve KV line where it crosses Palisades Boulevard. And again, we have the static wire, the sixty-nine KV and the twelve KV, and the underhung other utility. And so, that's what it would look like without the twelve KV line. These are, these photos are from, from Google Maps, and so they're quite a ways away. The, the other project is, as I mentioned earlier, at Caliente Wash is the only place in town that we have freestanding twelve KV lines, and, and that's it right there. This, this is the Elman property, and this is Ivory Drive right here. Fountain Hills Boulevard is backed behind it. So, this is what it would look like without the twelve KV lines there. Here's a, a large group of other potential projects that would fit within SRP's criteria. We're not recommending those. At this time, we didn't put in a request to SRP to look at those. They're already mad enough at us that we submitted so many requests for more than, totally more than we actually have in the Municipal Aesthetics Fund. And this, this is really our working map showing all of those different potential projects. Now, now a financial summary, the number, you see our priorities, the various projects, and the, the cost estimate that SRP gave, SRP gave to us on those. There's the total amount for the projects that staff is recommending. Here's the two, what we would consider alternative projects. And down at the bottom of your screen, unfortunately, lost it, is the amount of funding we have in the Municipal Aesthetics Fund, and the amount of funding that we're at risk of losing come next, in the next spring, summer. And let me get you those two numbers that you can't see on there. So, the available funds is one million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand plus, and the available at-risk funds is one million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand plus. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I already, I already got one phone call from a resident saying, why are you spending a million dollars? So, just so everybody understands, this is money that SRP gives us every year that we bank and we use for aesthetic purposes for anything related to SRP. This is their money that they gave us. They give us a hundred thousand dollars every year, correct?
Mayor, that's mostly correct. We don't actually ever even see the money. They, they, they put it into a pot in our name, and...
Okay. And we can only use it for SRP aesthetic projects?
We can only use it to beautify SRP project, SRP facilities, yes.
So, everybody understands that. Okay, great. Any other, Vice Mayor Yates?
Thanks, Mayor. And again, to be clear, the at-risk's number versus the budget number, we need to spend a million five, otherwise we lose that. The fact that we're spending a million seven one, and there's a million seven seven, we're not going to lose the sixty thousand. It's just...
Mayor, Councilman Yates, that's correct. Yeah, we can carry three hundred thousand dollars in that fund.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilman Elke?
Thank you. With respect to number three in the suggested motion regarding the underground at Shea, is there any, I'm sure you're coordinating with streets, and I know we've got a lot of street improvements and things going on, and I really hate to put down a new street only to cut it to hide wires or do things like that. Has there been any coordination or discussion about that?
We've mentioned it to our contractor that there may be an SRP project coming up. Actually, the SRP proposal is that they will not do an open cut, but do a, a bore, if you will.
What, in a bore? I mean, it sends you just go from one side of the street, drill underneath, without cutting?
Right.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
If, if, if we're able to and get it authorized, and if it is possible to work it into the Shea project, that may happen, and we may open cut it and may save a lot of money that way. That remains to be seen.
Any other questions for Randy? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then can I get a motion?
Motion to direct staff to authorize the work in SRP-maf. Conceptual estimates, number one, faux Suaro's, number five, Scottsdale swap, and number three, underground at Shea, three-span option, when feasible, with projects, number four, underground at Palisades, single-span option, and number six, underground at Caliente Wash as alternates if needed or when adequate funding is available.
Mayor, second.
Okay. Any other council discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Number eight, discussion with possible direction to staff relating to a request for proposal for a solar services agreement.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. As directed by the council, staff further researched possible procurement processes to secure pricing with qualified firms to provide privately-owned solar voltaic, photovoltaic energy systems in Cotillo Plaza. Due to the complexity of this type of project, it's necessary to seek proposals that would address the various town council questions and concerns regarding a solar services agreement. You have that RFP draft in your council packet for consideration, and in order to answer all those complex questions and, excuse me, and those concerns that the council expressed the last time we discussed that, in order to get to that level, we need to do an RFP to get to that, to get those vendors so that we can begin discussing all of the issues and parameters of that project, to bring those things back to the council to, to further discuss, and consideration, give consideration whether they want to proceed further with it. It's recommended that you do proceed with the RFP.
Questions for Ken, or Raymond's also here? Any questions? Ken, I was wondering if SRP is going to be involved in this, since they did offer us to help to, to look at any project that we're interested in, to run the numbers for us in the end, and see, because what they did before was just a preliminary?
Yes, they will be involved.
They will be involved. And I know that Safeway now is, is putting up this type of solar over their parking lot. So, I would, I would like that the residents look at what it looks like, because that's an important part of also doing this project, and see if they like the way that looks. We spend a lot of money trying to make our town look like desert, so take a good look at that. It's got a very industrial steel and glass look, and I would like to hear from residents whether they would like to see that type of structure over our parking lot, the entire parking lot of the Cotillo Plaza, and also the part where the, the police park. And I wonder if there was, we could include that in this, that I, I think it's very important to get, and somehow, if we could, not quite sure how we could do that, but I think it's important to hear from the residents about the aesthetics also, besides just the bottom-line numbers. Can we do that, Ken?
In what manner you're referring to?
I'm not sure in what matter. I mean, I'm sure people will call me, but, and I'm sure The Times will eventually run a survey, but I just would like to somehow incorporate residents' opinion in that, because it is a big change in what that whole area looks like. Now, if you stand there and you, it's blacktop, but if you stand there and you look, you see the whole, all the buildings, and it does look very desert. And if you see the big structure that's going up now, I just would like to know if people like the way it looks. Councilman Elke, you have a suggestion, or?
No, I just have a comment on this, on this agenda item. I think it's a little premature to ask what the residents would like without us even knowing what it would look like to begin with, and that's the purpose of this RFP. We certainly want resident input on everything. And we, we often do hear through, to, from residents through email, phone calls. Mayor, you've brought in emails that you've read from residents as well. And so, we do hear from them. So, I, I think it's important that we see what we're talking about first, because we don't know what it's going to look like. We don't know that it's going to be like what Safeway has. We don't know if it's going to be like what Mesa has. We don't know if it's going to be like what Tempe has. We don't know what it's going to look like, so I think it would be a little unfair to invite comments at this stage without having some type of conceptual idea. I mean, that's been done in the past as far as the town hall, community center, and different things, the plaza, and we invite comment about that. So, I think having that discussion first, or having something to discuss first would be best.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along the same lines with the RFP, we're going to get some renderings, and obviously, at the will of the council, we could take those, put it out there, have an open house of some sort before we vote on anything.
That's a great idea.
But part of, part of the package does include some renderings, just so everyone knows. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then, any other?
Yes.
Comment?
Yes.
Councilman LaJai?
I'm here to comment, so let me comment. I've been on council for a while, Mayor, and I don't think a lack of feedback is something that I'm familiar with when it comes to doing any type of project in, in Fountain Hills. That's evidenced by the event that we started off with this evening regarding discrimination and non-discrimination. I'm, my email was, was filled, and over the years, my email's been filled with controversial issues as well as non-controversial issues. So, I, I believe the feedback will, will flow forward. And in that regard, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of going out and looking at the RFP. It's kind of like saying, let's have a discussion about having a discussion, and it's a very similar thing. We don't know unless we have the discussion, and this is governance, and it's open governance, and in open governance, we have discussions, and this is something I believe we need to have a discussion on. Furthermore, I think we need to weigh the pros and the cons. You mentioned one, the aesthetics. Aesthetics is extremely subjective. I'm in favor of going out for an RFP for, first and foremost, it provides an opportunity for cost savings. And if anyone in this room is familiar with our revenue and our budget, anytime we can save money, it's extremely important for this town and our residents. Secondly, I see it as an amenity, a shade amenity for the uses of our community center for our residents during the summer, as well as our, our staff. And last but not least, it's my understanding in talking to our environmental supervisor that these shade structures would be lit, and if anyone spends any time at the community center or at town hall as you leave this evening, it's extremely dark out there, and it adds an element of enhanced public safety. So, I think it's worth moving forward in an RFP, and I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd move to approve to proceed with the request for proposals for a solar photovoltaic energy system for Cotillo Plaza.
Second. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Number nine, consideration with possible council direction regarding the initiation of an environmental fee.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Again, council requested staff to provide further information regarding the instituting a possible fee to assist the federally mandated stormwater management program and other associated environmental programs. Further, staff was to investigate the possibility of partnering with interested entities such as Chaparral Water or, or the Fountain Hills Sanitary District to assist with possible billing assistance for the town of Fountain Hills, or to conduct an in-house billing program itself. You have that report tonight. I'll go over briefly, but it's basically the same as, as what I provided last, last time, except for the areas of the billing assistance, which there was some cooperation, but the, as I explained in my report, those are cumbersome, as well as if you worked with Chaparral Water, we would have to go back to the Arizona Corporation Commission to even get approval for them to even assist us, to even think about billing on that process. Sanitary District said no, no, wouldn't want to help you. Second part is Republic Services. We talked to them. They were interested too, but they don't provide billing to all of the parcels, and they only do residential in the town. So, it's, that'd be inconsistent on that. So, with, with respect to the billing part of it, it would be just the, my recommendation would be to keep... be to keep it in-house should the council want to consider this, this measure. Again, it all stems from what they call the MS4 requirements, and that's the United States Environmental Protection Agency required municipalities to administer municipal separate storm sewer permitting under the U.S. Clean Water Act. Currently, the town of Fountain Hills has MS4 approved permit up until June of 2015, which will need to be required to be renewed. There are ongoing discussions with ADEQ right now for a renewed MS4 permit. The permit currently requires activities that include public education, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control, and pollution prevention. A lot of those measures you're seeing right now in these construction projects, where you see the straw bales protecting the scuppers from drainage, those are the measures that are required. Also, we're required to monitor any construction project that could have potential runoff of those construction sites into the waters of the United States. Activities also include street sweeping, storm drain and culvert inspection, cleaning drain, drainage parcel inspection, on-call storm debris cleanup, household hazardous waste collection, wash maintenance, as well as Arizona Department of Water Resources' dam inspections and maintenance requirements, illegal dumping costs, ADEQ stormwater permits and associated costs, water discharge permits for use of effluent on municipal park costs, municipal county, or I'm sorry, Maricopa County dust control permits and its associated costs. Currently, those impacts within, what kind of magnitude we're talking about, just within our 22-square miles of our corporate limits, we have 73,200 linear feet of storm drains and culverts and channels. We have 1.9 million linear feet of curb and gutter in our 177 miles of road that we take care of. Sweeping is required once every two months for residential streets and every three weeks for arterial streets. There's 407 catch basins where 25 are inspected annually that we are responsible for. There are 700 acres of town-owned washes that we're responsible for to add adequate drainage out of this, out of the community. We clean about 60 to 100 acres per year with available revenues in our annual budgets. And there are six town-owned dams, as I mentioned, that are designated by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. They're not dykes, they're not levees, those are dams, and that's a, that's a different story, and having to maintain those and how they're designated. As I mentioned, in the 2014-15 budget, the one we're in now, which goes July 1 to June 30, the town has absorbed $323,000 from existing funds toward the various required programs to adhere to a stormwater management plan, as well as air quality mitigation measures for monthly street sweeping. There's a estimated, there's an estimate of another 205,000 of other projects totaling $478,000, such as household hazardous waste collection, which is an expensive venture to administer. I think we've done that before, very expensive measures. We couldn't afford it in this year's budget. We couldn't get it in there to have the residential hazardous, household hazardous waste collections. To administer a collection system, it'll cost $80,000 for software and training to do the collection system as part of our software program that we have within the town of Fountain Hills, and it's additional $20,000 annually if we bill semi-annually, which would be two times every six months, and that's, that would be my recommendation, should you consider doing this. Over the past five years, from 2008 to 2014, the town of Fountain Hills has spent $1.1 million administering the above-mentioned projects and required programs. The expenditures to date have not kept up with the demand for those proper maintenance of the above-mentioned required stormwater management facilities. Given there are 13,000 parcels of land in Fountain Hills, in order to adequately fund the above-mentioned numbers, you would look at approximately a $3 per month assessment to fund 95% of the environmental program costs. There was also discussion about any potential capital projects that might be required, and my recommendation is that, at the time, those, although these are dated estimates that were in our past community, our capital improvement program, $7.9 million was needed to look at some stormwater management mitigation projects. The environmental fee is not a feasible funding instrument for this type of capital funding need. The, again, as I mentioned in the billing strategy, the, we talked to the sanitary district, and you have the document in your, in your council packet that respectfully declined any assistance to the town. We discussed it with Chaparral City Water Representatives, or basically Epcor, the parent company. They said, yes, they would be interested, but it would require cooperation with the Arizona Corporation Commission, which would be extremely cumbersome to deal with, considering in light what we're doing right now between us and Chaparral City Water and Epcor with the Arizona Corporation Commission. Republic Services has, did express interest, but my concern is, is that they only do residential, they don't do commercial, so they don't have all the parcels for that. So it is recommended, should you consider this, that it be an in-house billing process.
All right, thank you, Ken. Questions for Ken? Ken, if, if we do in-house billing, what is that going to involve? Isn't that, what if someone doesn't pay the bill? How do we, what do we do about that?
There is a collection process that you would have to initiate as well.
Would have to be staff that would do that, or we have to?
No, you'd have to, you'd have, you farm that out to collection processes, firms that do that for a living.
And would they do that on this small amount of?
It would have to be worth their while.
Yeah, do you have any idea what that would be?
Not here, no.
Okay, well, no one else has a comment. My comment is that I'm not in favor of this. It's not a fee, it's a tax, as I've said before, and I, first of all, everybody's gotten their water bill. We know how much that went up. Everybody, well, not yet, you will soon get your meter changed, and that will increase your water bill, because the new meters are registering more accurately your water use. They've estimated that in five years, we're going to be paying, we could be paying 48% more for the water that we're paying now. So we don't, we don't know, we already know what that increase is, we don't know what it's going to be next year, the year after, how much that's going to add to people's bill. The residents just passed the Sowaro bond to reconstruct the road, and that added tax hasn't been added on to them yet. The residents were generous enough to pass the override for the school. Well, that's not an increase, it's not a refund either. That tax remains. I just, just feel that with all these extra burdens on the people of the town, many who are still struggling with the economy, how can we even think of adding another tax? The economy's not yet recovered, there's a lot of people still out of work, a lot of residents in this town are using our food bank. There's, there's also things going on outside of Fountain Hills, things that we can't control. I mean, we're happy now that the gas prices are a little bit lower, but that could go up. Rents are rising, that's good for the economy, but not good for people who are renting. I mean, you could, you could add so many things to this, and you don't know what's coming. Drought in California is going to add a lot of extra expense to, they're already saying our produce is going to go up. You know, there's, there's, we want to encourage families to move into Fountain Hills with kids, and I just don't want to add any extra burden on to them, and I also don't like to impose a tax that people don't vote on. I think that the people clearly said when they voted against the property tax three times, that they want to say in, if they're going to be taxed, and they said no. So to me, that's, that's a mandate for me personally, not speaking for anybody else, just for how I feel, that with all of these burdens, with all of the fact that we don't know how much our bills are going to go up, I don't think it's the right time to do something like this, and so I won't be voting for this.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilman Brown.
You know, life's a burden, and you have to pay your way if you're going to make progress in this world, and my stance hasn't changed one bit. It's time for the people of Fountain Hills to start helping pay their own way. Robbing Peter to pay Paul is the main reason that our streets are in total disarray. We can't even pay for the maintenance on our own streets because nobody is helping pay for it, and I will say that we've got 73,000-plus linear feet of culverts and curbs, and we just cleaned out a cup, a few hundred feet, and if you amortize that backwards into 73,000 feet that probably need to be cleaned out and looked at, you're looking at $6 million just to clean it out. We aren't talking about $150,000, we're talking about $6 million that needs to be done. And at the same time, we can talk about on-call storm debris pickup, you know, that's not free, and you can't expect the town to go ahead and, and take from the general fund every time we have a big storm and go out and spend $40,000 or $50,000 that we don't have anyway. I mean, we seriously need to start looking at paying our own way. Household hazards, we, that's an unfunded project. What, are we supposed to dump it down our toilets and ruin our water supply, or dump it outside? I mean, it's, it's a serious, serious manner, and we need to figure out how to fund it so we can save our own little town in our own little environment. Wash maintenance, this is, in my opinion, the biggest item we've got to deal with. Yeah, let's talk about a tax and what it's going to do and why we shouldn't have it. Let's let a 30-mile-an-hour wind and a little monsoon strike light up a couple of our washes and ask our fire departments to fight it. We couldn't fight it with four fire departments the size we've got in a 30-mile-an-hour wind, and let's burn down a couple dozen houses. And then let's talk about whether we should really be paying four or five bucks a month to keep our washes cleaned. Right now, everything we're doing is going backwards. Ever since I've been on the council, we haven't had the money to fund, to clean the washes. It's just going backwards, it just continues to go backwards, and it's time that we took our own fate in our hands and stood up and shouldered it and said, hey, I like Fountain Hills, and I'm going to pay my way. So, no disrespect, Mayor, but I, I say that life is a burden, and we can't worry about the drought in California, that's totally out of our control, and it's going to happen. But it's time the people in Fountain Hills started shouldering some of the expenses so we can take care of our own in Fountain Hills.
Councilwoman Elke?
I've been on the council four and a half years, and this is actually my last council meeting tonight, at least up here where I have opportunity to, to address you in this way. And over the past four and a half years, we've made some significant, significant cuts in staff, cuts in our budgeting that, I mean, really had no choice. It's kind of like, if all of a sudden you find out that you have 30% less income, and you've got to, now you've got to make do with that. And we've substantially cut staff, and Ken, if I could put you on the spot just for a moment, can you tell us, just in the past, let's say, four years, where have we gone as far as staff numbers are concerned?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, I've been here three, so I couldn't tell you about four. I can, I can tell you that before I came, it was 88 employees, which had started from 110, I believe, was back during the peak, and then it went to, went from 88 to 44.
So about 50% cut.
And we have a number of part-timers that help with, part-time positions that help us with the, with the gap that we, that we have. So it's, it's actually, the budget was approved for 51 full-time equivalent. That's, that's both full-time and part-time making up.
And Ken, since I have you as well, Mayor, if I may, Ken, what, Councilmember Brown mentioned the street maintenance that we don't currently have funding for. We're getting ready to put down a nice new Sowaro, we're doing the Shea projects, we're doing some mill and overlay in different spots, but what annually is the amount that we need for, presently for road maintenance?
There was a study, and, and I know that the Development Services Director's here to, to help, help with further information should you need it. Stan Tech did a study for the town of Fountain Hills on what the proper program would be to address the, the life of the current asphalt that we have. Remember, we, you know, it's a 40-year-old community, so we've got in many places 40-year-old asphalt, and there's a continuum of that, of its life. Asphalt has a life. As you know, this council has addressed, with available revenues that we had, and made some fairly, very difficult decisions in the previous budget of 13-14, that was the previous budget, where we had to come up with $1 million to at least try to address the, the maintenance side of the pavement management program. And there's really, there's two programs that, that are required, that, the maintenance program, and then the asphalt replacement program.
Excuse me, I missed, so the, be the replacement program?
Be the replacement. That would take as much as $3 million a year, Paul? Yeah, it's, it's, by the time you add maintenance and you add to the two, it's a $3 million program. Currently, we, within our, we scraped our money together internally for $1 million. There is some opportunity that we're further discussing for a pavement replacement program, but the most I think we're going to be able to have out of that is, right now, we're paying for debt for preserves and, and, and community center building and the library and museum. When those come due, which is coming up, that that money can then be brought over, but that's still not enough money to match that $3 million that Stan Tech Engineering recommended. It's only going to do about $1 million of that at the end, so we'll have $1 million for maintenance and $1 million for asphalt, but we're going to need, really need two for asphalt replacement.
Okay, so, in short, still a $1 million shortfall?
And that's, that's a 2009 study.
So those numbers could go up?
Yes.
Okay. The other, the other thing I wanted to ask, maybe this is for, for legal, as far as the commercial properties here in town, there, there's been some discussion about the commercial property owners. Do, if you own a piece of commercial property in town, do you, do you contribute anything towards the town, or if you do, how is that financially?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Elke, it's probably a better question for our finance director, but I, I think that in terms of just simple numbers, that, without a primary property tax, there is no ongoing revenue stream other than the sales taxes generated from those commercial properties. So if it's not a sales tax generating property, it's not contributing on a regular basis.
Right, and those particular properties do receive services such as fire, police, other roads, public safety, those sorts of things?
Every property in town does.
Right, and Ken, does this proposal that you're, you're presenting, does this involve all properties in town, residential and commercial?
Yes.
Okay, there's, there's been discussion, and certainly in favor of everybody, including commercial property owners paying their fair share as far as public safety is concerned and all services that the town provides to the community. And, you know, as far as comparing this and saying that, well, Chaparral Water is increasing, produce could go up, gas prices could go up, pricier Starbucks coffee could go up, I suppose, too, we've got a responsibility as a town to make sure that we have a balanced budget, and that we have the funds to take care of those services that we, that we want to have. And we've, and we've narrowed it to infrastructure. We do give some to certain programming, the food bank being one, but we, we've, we've had to make cuts in, in those as well, and that's because we need the money to pay for the roads, to make sure you can get where you need to go. So I think that we need to make sure that we're being responsible, we're being safe, as Councilmember Brown said, and I think that the town gets squeezed, and please, I hope you have an opportunity to watch, you know, the council meetings, the town gets squeezed a lot by the state and the Fed, gets squeezed substantially. We had a water bill a few years back. We don't even have a water company, and we had to help pay for the state's, essentially the, the water fee. We get squeezed by the Fed with the EPA in these mandates. We have HERF funds and state shared revenues funds swept by the state. And has anybody followed the state? And has anybody followed the state? What's their budget looking like? What's the shortfall that they're, and where's that money going to be coming from? It's not going to be coming from economic development, at least not right away. It's going to be borne by the cities and towns and the counties. They're going to pass that along. So I think the future for the town as a whole is going to be tough as well because we're going to have fewer funds that we currently count on with the state. Thank you.
Ken, in talking about the reduction of staff, wasn't most of that reduction in staff due to the fact that the buildings stopped in Fountain Hills?
Again, I wasn't here when that happened, but I'm talking with staff that were, that was here. A lot of that was from, from the development side, but it was across the board.
What is the cost to administer this in-house, this tax? What's, what's going to be the cost to the town? I mean, if you're asking people to pay three dollars, what part of that is our cost to administer it? There has to be some cost. This be, how are we going to do it? Are we mailing bills to people?
Yes, it'll be a billing, it'll be a billing process. That's what we're talking about with the software.
Okay. So, there's special software to do this?
Yes.
And?
We have Amunis computer software, and we had, we did not purchase that module to, to include it, and that's what this would require.
And how much does that cost?
Eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand?
Now, we'll include training.
Okay. And then, so then there's a cost every, is this four times a year or?
No, as I mentioned, I would recommend two times a year, every six months.
So two times a year, this has to be mailed out to everybody?
Yes, ten thousand dollars a mailing.
Asking them for how much?
Well, in that case, it would be six times three.
Okay. And if we, if there's not enough for a collection agency to get involved in, then what do you do about people that don't pay the bills?
You'd have to add it, build up, and then would have to go collect.
And do you know how much collection agencies?
Again, I answered that before. No, I couldn't tell you that at this point in time.
Okay. And the cost that I was talking about mostly, even though I did mention some residual costs like California droughts and other things like that, I was talking about definite increases, not possible increases. Water and definitely is going to go up. People have got their water bills and they're doubled. The Saguaro bond, that's a definite tax increase, and the continuation of the override. So the others are just other things that could also add to the burden. But those are, those are definite, so I'm not just talking about possible tax increases. Okay. Anybody else have a comment? Councilwoman Dickey?
Mayor, just a couple of things. The, what Councilman Brown was talking about, which was the washes, very important. Also, we have not been able to proactively clean storm drains or drainage from parcels, and that's starting to add up, and it's been put off for quite a while. And also pavement striping, which isn't part of the environmental fee, but it is part of the HERF funding that we should be doing that every five years, but we have been doing it, I believe, every ten years. If you take a look at our budget, you'll notice that we've had to use HERF fund balances to make up gaps, including over three hundred thousand dollars this year. So over the next year or two, we won't, we won't have enough in the HERF fund balance in order to make up that gap. And last, to piggyback on what Councilman Elke said about property taxes, and again, us old timers who've been here a while, but even those who were here before, I believe, two thousand and five, so before, geez, I, I think, I can't remember exactly when we stopped with the road districts, but those like me who've been here for over thirty years, we paid property taxes for roads and for fire. So basically, the roads that exist now, and the, except for private ones, and then the ones, the, the fact that if we ever did have to go to our own fire department, it would be a seamless transition because we own, we, we only have the personnel that we use from rural metro, but all of the equipment and the buildings and the trucks and everything were purchased and the town owns. And that's, is because those of us who've lived here, including the businesses, so anybody that owned property, did pay property taxes for those things. So I think it was kind of unrealistic, think we can continue on without anything like that, because again, the, the roads and the, and the stuff that Tate was talking about, who gets those benefits of public safety and roads? It's everybody, but, you know, we laid the foundation for that, and you really just have to do that. And that goes back to your point, Councilwoman Brown. Thanks.
Sorry, go ahead.
Actually, I just had a billing question. I know in here we refer to, it's, it's per parcel. How do we handle something like a Target that has multiple little buildings in the big building?
Whatever the parcel's designated delineated at, does that be that, that individual parcel?
I think some of these centers don't necessarily have individual parcel numbers, per se.
That one does.
In Target, it does?
Yeah. There's, there's multiple owners in that, in that shopping center.
And would that apply to any other shopping centers as well?
Couldn't tell today. We'd have to go to County Recorders Office to get the parcels for the community.
Andrew, were you going to say something?
I was. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, the imperfection of how to assign this fee is obvious in the parcel world because of the commercial parcels. Target has maybe five parcels when it has a lot of impermeable surface that actually creates runoff and probably should bear a different burden. But last year's bill from the legislature prohibits us from charging on a size basis. And so we have to go back to the imperfect world of parcel by parcel, regardless of the size, regardless of what they have on them, has to be equal all the way through the system. And so it, it is the most directly related to the type of fee you're charging. The parcel is what generates the, the runoff and the debris and the things that need to be removed from the drainage structures. And so we're, we're trying to find the thing the most closely related to the service requirement. And that's probably the best we're going to do. We, we don't know any other way to get there based upon the law.
Okay. That clarifies. And over the years, I mean, most of us have been opposed to additional fees, additional taxes, but every year at Budget Time, and every time we have a retreat, we have the gnashing of teeth of how are we going to pay for things? How are we going to pay for the increased cost of public safety, which are so much a part of our budget? We've said no to additional fees consistently, but at some point in time, since the voters really are not supporting a property tax, even when it was supposedly for public safety, I think at some point we've got to bite the bullet and say, we need some help. We need some help from the community to at least offset some of these unfunded mandates that we have to deal with. And by freeing up a little money on these environmental costs that we have no option to do but to comply with, then we have to, that would free up money that could go towards the streets, towards public safety. But at some point in time, we're going to just have to bite the bullet and say, we need a little bit of help, a little bit more revenue to pay for the services that are provided to the town. I mean, I don't like it either. I mean, who likes to pay more money? But it's just reality.
Ken, I just have a question for you. Is there anything in this that locks this three-dollar fee in so that it won't be increased next year or the year after?
Only by council action.
So it could be three dollars this year, but it could be anything after this?
Only by council action.
By council action. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I don't think anyone up here is going to debate the fact that we need some more revenue. And I made the calculation last time this got brought up, that if the average person, or I should just say if all of our citizens would spend two dollars a day in buying something in town pretty much pays this bill, straight scale, I know that's a little optimistic. Where I'm coming from is, I think it's not a matter of we need more revenue, it's a matter of is this the right tool to generate that revenue? If, you know, and back to the parcel issue, I agree, a fifty thousand square foot building on a two-acre parcel paying three dollars a month isn't quite fair, so to speak. The, the people did support a tax by overwhelmingly approved the Saguaro bond. So I, I think it's back to how we package this. So maybe we, we, you know, bite at the apple again. Let's collect all these fees that we legitimately need, lean and mean, and have that discussion maybe on our, our retreat. I'm not debating the fact that we need more revenue, none of us are, but I will say TSC, I was up in Prescott, they now have three locations up there and they're doing very well. One TSC that's going to come, that's Tractor Supply Company, could probably generate another one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us annually in just the sales tax. So my only comment to everybody is, I don't debate that we need revenue, it's just, I debate if, if this is the right tool. I'm back to whether we do a district or whether we take another bite at the apple of a primary property tax on the discussion thing, keep it lean and mean, and let's look at everything. Because now I feel like we're piecemealing. This is one three dollar, and it, and it is a tax, but one three dollar tax over here, and then we're going to come back and say, well, we're short two million dollars on our road bond. Let's package this, do this the right way, the way we did it on Saguaro, put it out to the folks honestly and openly, and let them decide, because the, the seven of us, even though it's three dollars, it, it, I just feel we're doing it wrong. Thank you, Mayor. Two dollars a day, though, everybody, and, and we're there.
And just on what you said, we did invest a lot of money in hiring an economic development specialist, and I think we need to give him a little time. He's making a lot of progress, as we can see. New restaurants in town, Tractor Supply Company, like you said. You know, he's just getting started, and I think he's doing a great job. Councilman Elke?
Thank you. This isn't the first time that we've talked about this. I think we've talked about this every year during, around Budget Time. So we've gone down, I mean, the town's limited on its own self-determination and what it has the ability to do. We can raise sales tax, that's one thing. I mean, the last time that sales tax was raised, I believe, was when the town took over the fire district and assumed that the voters were going to approve a primary property tax, which they didn't. So we assumed that responsibility, took away their taxing authority, and basically brought on another two to three million dollars, and certainly more than that now. So the town's limited in what it can do, and as far as packaging, I mean, there's, there's only so much that you can do. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I'm not, certainly not trying to rebut, but I, I know we've gone around and around and around on this quite a bit. And economic development with the town, sounds like a silver bullet, that it's going to save, we're going to have property or sales tax revenues, and that's going to save us. I'm here to tell you, four and a half years, four different budgets, sales, economic development in the town is good, and I want it. But it's going to be people on the house tops, it's going to be the building, it's going to be that. We're not going to be able to live and die by the sales tax. When we have a downturn in the economy, as we did, there's substantial cuts that had to be made because people weren't buying. And that's, that's kind of how, how we are right now. And economic development sounds nice, everybody likes it, new restaurants, new businesses, you know, different things. I want those things in town. I'm on the chamber board. I want those things. But that's not going to be the solution to, to what ails us financially. It just isn't.
Vice Mayor?
Not as a rebuttal at all, but again, to show that the residents of Fountain Hills voted against the bond when they didn't like how we packaged it, and then overwhelmingly passed it when we did tell them lean and mean, they understood it and overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly approved it. So I, I think there is some precedence. I think now might be the time that we have this conversation again, but package it the right way, because first off, three dollars a month per parcel isn't enough. This is enough, this is scratching the surface and paying a hundred thousand dollars year one to get it started. That, that doesn't sound like good investment money on, on our end. I'd rather take another bite at the apple. If, if that's the direction the whole council wants to go, package this the right way. Again, I'm not debating the fact that we need more revenue, it's just I don't think this is the right tool to do it.
Councilwoman Lejeune?
Thank you. Just a few details for the benefit of the residents that don't have the benefit of the package we have in front of us. I think the proposal is three dollars a month, so that would be thirty-six dollars a year. And that would yield the town four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And that would cover the cost of most of these mandates that we were talking about and all the projects that Councilman Brown had emphasized there in terms of washes, so forth and so on. There is a significant startup cost, and the first year with startup cost, we would gain three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Each year after that, covering the cost that council, that, you know, you're not a council person. Our town manager mentioned we'd be looking at a gain of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year, which is substantial in terms of covering these costs and these, these mandates. When I first started on council, we had a general fund budget of eighteen million dollars. We now have a general fund of twelve point five million. What does a general fund do? It runs the operation of the town. How do most towns operate? They have a property tax that runs the operation of the town. We don't have a property tax that runs the operation of the town. So I'm certainly not in favor of fees or taxes, but we're getting to the point where some tough decisions need to be made. The other decision is we stop doing things, and it's going, that's, that's where we're headed next unless we make some tough decisions. It may include closing a park, so forth and so on. Staff has done a tremendous job keeping things rather seamless. People live in this town and say, hey, things are looking pretty good, things are going well, we have all the services that we need. Mayor, if I may, Council, Vice Mayor Yates stated that other, other options out there, here's an option for you. If we increase our sales tax by fifteen hundredths of a percent, it will yield the same amount of money. Which, you know, what's, what, what's, what's, what's the best of the evil out there? I mean, we're going there, it's going to happen sooner or later, and, you know, it's a matter of pay now or pay later. This particular proposal, I, I do have some issues with myself. I'm not sure I'm quite on board with it, but it's, it's, it's educational. At some point in time, our sales tax needs to increase, or we need to start doing things like this. It's just, it's just reality out there. And even if we increased our sales tax by, Vice Mayor Yates, an option, by fifteen hundredths of a percent, we would still well below a, a local sale tax of Buckeye, Carefree, Cave Creek, El Mirage, Glendale, Guadalupe, Lynchfield Park, Youngstown, so forth and so on. So I don't think it would throw us into a, a big downfall. So you asked for an option? That, that, that's a possible option, which I'm sure you would not consider because there's no way you would consider increasing sales tax. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Lejeune, although I believe in the free market, and if our competition is Scottsdale, Paradise Valley, Mesa, if those aren't on the list, those are the options. That's why I would not be in favor of increasing. But along these same lines, for full disclosure, love winter visitors, snowbirds, but the reality is the six to eight months out of the year that they're not here, spending money, eating, dining, buying gas, dry cleaning, that's, that's where the real issue is. And charging Target three dollars a month, and then a little tiny, respectfully, a little tiny Gemini home, them three dollars a month is, is not the right way to do it. I'm, I'm back to, this is the wrong tool. The reality is, we, we've been having this discussion forever. If we're going to do this, let's do it right. I think, I think the, the residents of Fountain Hills are open to having that, that discussion. I know we're all afraid of doing that, but for us to just arbitrarily, with information, but arbitrarily voting to tax you all without your voice, I, I just think it's the wrong tool. So I'm, I'm going to reiterate again, there's plenty of other things to do there. The precedence has been set, the residents will vote for an increase when they know exactly what it's for. I just think that's a better way to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. You know, I've, I think I've heard the Vice Mayor say, you know, there, there's other avenues, there's other avenues, and I'm yet to hear him say, but here's an avenue. And, I mean, he campaigned that way, he is, I've heard it now for well over two years. There's another avenue. It's, it's the silver bullet, it's the economic development. It's not. It's time that we stop the ball from rolling backwards because we live in this town, and until we start supporting ourselves, this ball's going to roll backwards. One of the very first questions I asked Ken Buchanan when he became the town manager was, what do we do when, when we run out of money? And I- And I found the answer to be quite interesting. He said, well, Scottsdale will take everything on that side of Shea, and this side, nobody will want, because they've got some golf course, and they've got some commercial work, and, you know, there's some real life over there. That's not what I want to happen for Fountain Hills, and it's time that we shouldered our own expenses. I mean, I hear, oh, yeah, let's soft shoe this again. It's been shot, soft shoe to death now for 15 years, and it's time that somebody, hopefully this council, recognizes the fact that we've got to stop the bleeding, we've got to stop rolling backwards, at least stop the ball until we can come up with a better solution. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve a $3 per month fee per parcel to offset the cost of an environmental program for the town of Fountain Hills.
Second. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Any further council discussion? I have just one last comment. It sounds like a big number that we have here that says that we're going to get annually, but I'm not sure how we can say that that's how much we're going to get when all of the questions that I've asked about the cost to administer, how many people are actually going to pay, how do we... The cost of a collection agency to go after people who haven't paid, there's just, I don't see that we can actually come up with a figure unless we have all of those other questions answered.
Mayor, if I may, the figure I quoted of $418,000 net year two includes all of that. It included mailing, it included maintenance of software, and I even threw in there $20,000 for collections. So it did include some of those things. I mean, you know, we're...
Some of them, okay.
Excuse me, all of our overhead was included in that figure. After the overhead figures that have been provided us by staff, we're looking at a net of about $418,000. As I said earlier, I'm not sure I'm on board with this, but I just wanted to mention those numbers to you.
Okay. I'm just not sure then why, when I asked the cost for administrating it and all the other questions, Ken said that they had no idea right now.
It's in our packet. $16,438, which includes stamps, postage paper, mailing, so forth and so on. $5,625 annually for systems maintenance. The numbers were in there. The only one I'm swagging is collections, but typically collections gets a piece of the action, so it's not usually out of pocket. You lose a little revenue, and, you know, I extrapolated that and threw plenty in for that, but nonetheless, I don't want to split hairs on this. We're looking at about a $400,000 net gain if we move in this direction. Thank you.
Can we get a roll call vote, please? Vice Mayor Yates?
Nay.
Councilmember Legay?
Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Mayor, four to three. And where are we up to? We're up to number 10, discussion with possible direction to staff related to any item included in the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Legislative Bulletin related to action proposed or pending before the state legislature. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, nothing at this time.
Okay, I just have something to add as far as the legislature goes. We did have our first meeting, and I wanted to make the council aware of just a couple of things that I thought are important, and I won't go into a lot of detail. The League is going to be participating in an amicus brief in a few cases, and I think those cases are very important to Fountain Hills. The first is, they will be participating in the Ponderosa Fire District versus Coconino County case, which was recently decided by the Court of Appeals. It would have required local government to install full infrastructure in developments, even if they were not being built. So you can see why the League has opposed that and why we wouldn't want that. Then there is Glazer versus the State of Arizona. It would require governments to upgrade all roadways to current construction standards instead of doing maintenance and repair to streets and roads that were built to previous standards. And the other is Rawling versus the City of Tucson. It's not written yet, but this is what they're planning on doing. The city, this case found the city liable for water damage allegedly from utility pipes under claims of nuisance or trespass, and they feel that each of these cases has serious ramifications for the cities and towns. So they will keep us apprised on that. And they are also, as I discussed earlier with Councilwoman Brown, and he's offered to help me with this, the construction industry has come back with possible tweaking of the TPT. So right now, they're just saying they want a few changes, and it seems very reasonable to the League, but we do want to make sure that it's not going to change as it did last time. That was a big fight and a lot that we could have lost if it'd gone through, so...
And Mayor, just a quick note on the amicus briefs. Over the last year, I've been the president of the Arizona Cities and Towns Association, and one of the fun tasks you get is to chair the amicus committee and decide which cases are going forward with support by the League. This is a very active year. To have three of them going at one time is a lot. We're very fortunate to have a good private practice attorney who is gifted at appellate briefs and at a very low rate. So the League has done a good job of finding quality writers and weighing in only when necessary, and these are some, you know, strict liability for water damage that can't even be proved it came from your life. That's a big darn deal, and unfortunately, three at once is where we're at.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, I have personal privilege, please.
Absolutely.
As Councilman Elke mentioned earlier, this is his last meeting, and it's Councilwoman Dickey's last meeting as well, and I just want to publicly acknowledge both of them. I've had the opportunity to work for, well, Ginny and I have worked together for, what's it been, two terms, eight years? That's almost a PhD in governance. And Councilman Elke, for four years, you know, there's times we've been on board with each other, there's times we've disagreed, but there's always been civility. It's just been a great working relationship with both of yous. You will be missed, and these two folks have contributed to our community prior to being on council, they've contributed to our community while on council, and they will contribute to our community while they're off council. And thank you, Mayor, for that.
Okay, you're here. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay. Well, they will be back for the next meeting for a few minutes.
For a formal.
For a formal next meeting. Anything else? Vice Mayor.
Although tonight's meeting was a little contentious at times, I want to say, the town is what a great small town. Quick story, my dogs got out last Friday. I had a delivery and I put it out on social media, and boy, it really was, it spread out. Within two hours, the dogs were found and brought back. But, I mean, folks were saying, I'll come over and help look for you, from all over the place. So I just want to give a huge shout out to the residents of Fountain Hills, because this really is a great community, and we all look out for each other. So I want to thank Ron R., and I won't say his last name because I didn't ask him, in Sunrise Canyon, Sunrise Canyon found him. So thank you, Ron.
Dogs okay?
Dogs are great.
Good, that's important. Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Dickey, would you like to do the final motion?
Oh. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?